County positions. Honorable Judge Jacob here to do to preside and conduct that business force. And I think what we'd like to do is invite all of the newly elected officials and county commissioners up front here. And, yeah, just, I'll get out of the way. And we'll turn the time over to Judge.
Good morning. Fran, why don't you come up here? And I'll start with you because it looks like you have to sign these. Okay. Well, I guess without, I'm gonna raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Fran Winchell.
I, Fran Winchell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will discharge faithfully.
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Auditor Treasurer.
The duties of the Office of County Auditor Treasurer.
The County of Rice.
The County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
There's a certificate for each.
There's Steve Bauer.
I raise your right hand. I, Steve Bauer.
I, Steve Bauer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will discharge faithfully.
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District Four.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District Four.
And the County of Rice.
County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, David J. Miller.
I, David J. Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District Three.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner, District Three.
And the County of Rice.
The County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
Congratulations. I, Troy Dunn.
I, Troy Dunn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will discharge faithfully.
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Sheriff.
The duties of the Office of County Sheriff.
And the County of Rice.
And the County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
I, John Fossom.
I, John Fossom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will discharge faithfully.
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Attorney.
The duties of the Office of County Attorney.
And the County of Rice.
And the County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Judy Bennenfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of County Reporter.
The duties of the Office of County Reporter.
And the County of Rice.
And the County of Rice.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Do you have plaques for me?
I do have plaques.
Okay. So we have certificate of elections for.
Good.
Nice to.
Well, congratulations. Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Yes, you have to be signed at four, don't they?
Yeah.
Morning, Tony.
Good morning.
I've got that landfill information for you, so before you leave, though.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you. Sorry, I come right in on the.
Yeah.
Must've got the thing really started promptly.
All right, we will call the Rice County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And the first on the agenda, we have roll call.
Bauer.
Here.
Gillon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
And Malika.
Right, next we have approval of the agenda.
So move for approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bauer and a second by Commissioner Gillon.
No, Miller.
Miller. Guys sound like twins today. Any changes or corrections to the agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have election of officers. So as should follow, it should be Commissioner Miller for Chair and Commissioner Dacken for Vice Chair. So if we can have a nomination for Chairman of the Board, which would be Commissioner Miller.
Don't do it. Don't do it. How's that? I'll so move. That's what you think.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Dacken and a second by Commissioner Gillon for, to nominate Commissioner Miller for the Chair. Are there any other nominations? Don't hold out hope, Dave. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll end that. And so we have a motion for Commissioner Miller to be the Chair for the incoming year.
I move to cast unanimous ballot for Commissioner Miller for Chair for 2015. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gillon to move unanimous ballot and a second by Commissioner Miller. All those in favor, or excuse me, second by Commissioner Bauer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Welcome, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you very much.
So you need to come sit here now and finish the meeting.
Just got set up here.
I know.
Don't forget your name tag.
Yeah. Long as you're getting the big bucks. And about that. It's just a bonus that you get to sit next to me. I feel more than sure you're sitting next to Shelley, too. All right. All right, next we have to.
Oh, we need to, yeah, elect.
Yeah, elect the Vice Chair.
I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Dacken as our Vice Chair.
Second. Who's second? JP, Steve. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Malika, second by Commissioner Bauer, that Jeff Dacken would be the Vice Chair for 2015. Any other nominations? If not, we can vote. All those in favor of Jeff Dacken being elected Vice Chair for 2015, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose. You're in. I feel honored. Do I, is there time for a speech, or?
No.
No.
No, there's not.
No. You ain't got the gamble yet. Now we need to set Commissioner meeting dates and times for 2015.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Gillon, Malika. Any second? I'll second it. Second by Commissioner Gillon. Any discussion? All in favor of setting Commissioner meetings and dates and times for 2015, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose. Nay? It's set. Thank you. Now we have to move on to Commissioner Committee Appointments. We have our list in front of us. Any changes? Anybody want to take something else, or?
I'll give you a lot, Dave.
What's that?
Said I can give you a lot. Or Jake, one of the two.
No, I don't want no more, thank you. Commissioner Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the changes is, and I think Commissioner Malika will agree, that I will go back on to the MICA Board, MICA Board of Directors.
Okay. Any other changes?
Should we have an alternate on that? Because I think there were times when the two of you were on there and I ended up going a couple of times because you were both gone and a few.
I think the rest of the board is named as alternate.
All right. Very good.
We don't have anybody, are we officially forming this Regional Passenger Rail Committee?
I will be happy to volunteer as one of the Commissioners.
Can I put you down as number one?
Why, thank you. Jake or Jeff?
I'm fine with it, too, I guess. Either you have a strong feeling about it.
I don't. If you'd like, Jeff, you can certainly have at it. I said, I think I'm on enough of them types of boards, so I said that. So we have for the MICA Board of Directors, Dacken as representative and the Regional Passenger Rail Committee as Malika with Dacken as alternative, alternate. Any other changes? Commissioner Bauer?
Just to make a note, I think everyone knows that we no longer have the District One Hospital Appointment Committee. And that's been taken, obviously, that's been taken off.
Okay. Commissioner Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we, the combination of the committees that we were going to do would have been solid waste and planning, is that correct? Was that the idea?
Yeah, that would have been a request that we'd made to combine solid waste and planning and also to combine parks and buildings into a Parks and Facilities Committee.
Okay, I think, I believe that Commissioner, Commissioner Bauer, are you in agreement that if, if we combine those committees, that it would be Commissioner Gillon and myself?
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That'd be Parks and Solid, excuse me, Solid Waste and.
Planning.
Planning Commission. Very good.
No, that's fine.
That'd be great. And then Parks and Facilities is listed as Malika and Miller, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other changes? With those changes, I would look for a motion to.
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Malika and a second by Commissioner Gillon to approve the Board and Committee Appointments for 2015. Any other discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. That passed.
Mr. Chair, if I might, there's a second piece of this that I slipped in on you on this agenda item, if I could. The Association of Sota Counties is also asking that we appoint County Commissioners to their policy committees and to.
Oh, yeah.
As voting delegates for 2015. And so I thought we would take this opportunity while we're making committee appointments to also make those committee designations also. So I didn't know if there was, there is a copy of a resolution. AMC has asked that we do this by resolution in your packet. And if you would like to explain or communicate your preferences on committee assignments, we can get those recorded here and sent off to AMC.
Are we going to say the same as last year? Go ahead, Commissioner Bauer.
Anything, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna, that's what I was just going to offer, that I would, I would be interested in staying on the Environment and Natural Resources Committee.
So Bauer.
Dave, you were under General Government.
Yep.
Jeff, you were, I was under Health and Human Services.
In the HAG and Task Force, I was.
What were you under?
HAG and Task Force.
There's Public Safety and Transportation.
HAG is. Transportation.
HAG is not a policy committee.
No, right.
It's got a different designation, so you can continue to participate and be on that HAG Committee.
But is there other?
Your Transportation, you were Transportation and Infrastructure and Jeff was Public Safety.
Oh, okay. There were, there was five of them, so. Yeah. Okay, that's fine. We got that all straight? Yep. So invite our Mental and Natural Resources, Commissioner Bauer, General Government, myself, Health and Human Services, Gillon, Malika, Public Safety, Jeff Dacken, Transportation and Infrastructure, Jake Gillon. All right? Yep.
I move to approve Resolution 15-004.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dacken, second by Commissioner Malika, to approve these appointments. Commissioner Bauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for Tony, was that, were we voting members or alternates?
They no longer have alternates, so they changed the AMC bylaws to basically read that every county can assign a Commissioner to a policy committee, but only one. You can't be assigned to two.
Right.
And there are no alternates. And everyone assigned is a voting member.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Moving on to the Administration portion, the Consent Agenda. So move approval of the Consent Agenda. Second. We have a motion of approval of the Consent Agenda by Commissioner Gillon, second by Commissioner Bauer. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Moving on to opening a bids of designation of our official newspaper. Commissioner Murphy, or Administrator Murphy?
It appears Commissioners have only received one bid. So we're opening that at this time.
Inquirer?
The drama here is, of course, very exciting. Faribault Daily News.
All right.
Are bidder for this year. And we have a bid amount for publishing financial statements, nine point seven five per inch. And for publishing of official proceedings and public notices, nine point seven five per inch.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 15-001, designating Faribault Daily News as the official newspaper. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Bauer, second by Commissioner Dacken. Commissioner Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How does that rate compare to last year? I don't recall.
It's the same.
It's the same?
Right. Any other questions?
Should've went down, but.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Makes us feel better.
Can we have that quote in the paper this week? I think it'd fit real well.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the Faribault Daily News as our official newspaper. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Congratulations. Next, we have Resolution 15-02, publication of delinquent real estate tax list. Administrator Murphy, or?
That was included in the bid that we just opened and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. So move to adopt Resolution 15-002. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Bauer, second by Commissioner Gillon for approval of the delinquent tax list. Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Moving on to Agenda Publication. Move to approve. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gillon, second by Commissioner Malika for publication of the agenda. Any questions? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Moving on to Incidental Fund Appropriations.
Commissioners, I could appreciate some clarification from you on this agenda item. I've been picking Fran's brain a little bit on this. I wasn't really familiar with the term incidental fund appropriations. And my understanding is that this is an action that the Board has been taking really for a long time. For, really for everyone's memory, it's something we've always done as a County Board of Commissioners at the organizational meeting, where you essentially pre-approve expenditures for postage and communications, utility bills, attorney contingency, and sheriff contingency. I guess part of my question is, why do we pre-approve the bills in that way? Why can't they go through the normal bill approval processes? And Fran has indicated that in some cases in the past, probably quite a long in the past, perhaps utility bills, for example, weren't necessarily paid on time. And then there was an assistance on paying a penalty. And this allowed us to make sure we were paying them on time. With us having regular Board meetings twice a month, it's hard to believe that we would miss that opportunity to pay those bills on time, but. And then the attorney contingency and sheriff contingency are actually part of our budget. And so they've already been approved by the County Board and so those elected officials can process bills under those contingency amounts, really without having to have any additional pre-approval. So I'm not sure that that's needed. So I'm just questioning whether this is a process you want to continue to follow or whether we need to, I mean, there's a certain amount of redundancy in it, but doesn't do any harm either. So it's really your preference on whether you would like to continue doing it. The postage and communications amount approved for 2014 in this incidental fund appropriation was 120,000. Utilities was 300,000. Attorney contingency was 1,000 and sheriff contingency was 1,000.
I will make a motion to approve it for this year. Is there a second? Then we can discuss it.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Malika, second by Commissioner Gillon.
I would say next year, bring it back. Or don't even put it on, I guess. Work it out with everybody. And if there's no need then at that point, then just don't even put it on the agenda.
Okay, I can certainly do that. There's other comments?
Commissioner Gillon? Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as utility bills, they can get really nasty if they don't get paid on time. It's a 10 percent hit, I said, and they don't really seem to have any mercy on you, one way or another. I said, if you're late, you're late and you pay the, you might as well pay the, pay the late penalty and can move on because they just don't seem to have no forgiveness there. You've got to jump through more hopes than it's worth. And so I said, if that's a, if that's a problem, and I really don't see why it should be, being this, I'm paying bills twice a month and whatnot, but that's kind of my feeling on that end of it anyhow. Go ahead, Fran.
I know most of the time it's two weeks, but there are times where it expands to three weeks. And like in December, sometimes the, you know, the meeting schedules just don't work out. And I know my accounts payable person said that, you know, she, she's adamant about, you know, keeping that pre-approval to get those bills paid so that we don't have those finance charges. And I know we've run into situations with their postage, too, where we've needed to act right away. And, you know, given this authority, we can cut the check right away. Otherwise, we have to wait for the Board to, you know, approve the bills to make those payments, so.
What do you mean by postage?
We have a postage machine that we have to fund the vendor.
Okay.
And then they apply postage. And if we don't provide them a check right away, they can't give us the postage and we can't do business, so.
Thank you.
So, those are some situations. The, you know, the, certainly the contingency fund for the attorney and the sheriff are ones that, you know, perhaps could be, the statute already kind of lays out a methodology for advancing those. But, but those, you know, the postage and the utilities, you know, it's giving me the authority to just write the check without getting approval from the Board up front. We do provide the Board with copies after we've made those payments. And so you do see the payments, but it's after the fact instead of before.
And it's not every month. It's just when an odd.
No, we, we, we pretty much pay the utility bills when they come due on an auditor warrant and it's only my signature on the check.
Okay.
Where all the Commissioner warrants, it's my signature and the Board Chair's signature. And the Commissioner warrants are all, all paid. We get the invoices and then we make the payment after we get the invoices and after your approval. Auditor warrants, I make the decision and after we make the payment, then we provide the listing to you to say, well, we made these payments to these vendors for utilities and postage and the like.
Okay, Commissioner Dacken, then Commissioner Bauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess Mike, if it's not necessary, I guess, as it sounds like right now, maybe it is necessary, but I can see where the gap would be, maybe December AMC, probably is my one and only that I can think of right off. And I don't know whether or not that, whatever fall, you'd fall short of the time there. I guess, and I'm okay as it stands this year, and I somewhat agree with Commissioner Malika, let's only put on what would absolutely be necessary on this and not anything else. You know, same with postage, I don't know if it's necessary or not. You would think you'd be able to keep ahead of the postage enough not to have to worry about that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, we have times.
Every once in a while, something happens.
Something happens.
Okay. All right. I mean, we, so, that's my opinion. I guess I'll go with it this year and then make sure that if we're going to do it next year, only have on what absolutely is necessary to have on.
Commissioner Bauer? I thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, you know, we should continue approving this incidental fund appropriation. You know, we do have the months that have five Tuesdays.
Weeks, right.
And when those, when we have those months that have five Tuesdays, it results in about a three-week delay between a regular meeting, you know, in addition to, you know, your Decembers.
Right, yes.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion by Commissioner Malika, second by.
Gillon.
Gillon, or Gillon. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion approved. Moving on to adoption of Resolution 15-03, designating Rice County Website as. Moving on to adoption of Resolution 15-03, designating Rice County Website as the 2015 Official Publication for Transportation Projects.
Move to approve Resolution 15-003. Second.
So we have a motion by Gillen, a second by Dacken. Any discussion? No discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on.
Second.
We have a motion for adjourned by Dacken, second by Gillen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. We're adjourned.